...up there.
Yep, it is.
Oh, there we are. Our light is on, so we're ready to roll here. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Albany City Council meeting, and we have a wonderful group in attendance this evening, so thank you. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the republic.
And to the republic. Hey, Teresa, roll call, please.
Councilor Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Cooper.
Here.
Mayor Canopah.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have a special presentation, and I think that's what most of the folks are here for. And this is for our 2015 Human Relations Awards and Certificates. And who's going to present it? Graham, Chris, and Javier? Okay, all right. Would you like to come on up? And probably introduce yourselves, too, to everyone.
Mayor Canopa, City Council members, and audience. My name is Chris Equinowa, and joining me here this evening is Graham Killingsbury and Javier Cervantes. We are members of the City of Albany Human Relations Commission. It is our honor this evening to recognize individuals and organizations that have played a role in making Albany such a welcoming community. The Human Relations Commission was established in 2007 by the Albany City Council to promote harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany. This is done through recommendations of programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures, and other appropriate governmental activities to the city council and to the city manager. The Human Relations Commission strives for actions that lead to positive and respectful relations within our community. Through focusing on positive community change, the commission strives to help the city of Albany be that nurturing community. One of the ways the commission promotes Albany's strength is by sponsoring the Human Relations Award. The City of Albany Human Relations Commission recognizes individuals and organizations that have worked to promote the ideals of harmonious relations among our citizens. The first of these awards was given out in January of 2012. Tonight, awards will be given to two winners, as well as recognition will be given to those individuals and groups that have been nominated for their demonstrated commitment to promoting Albany human relations in Albany, especially related to diversity and equality. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Graham Killingsbury, one of our commission members, who will present the individual nominees and individual award.
Well, with the nominees for Human Relations Award for individuals, please come forward as I say your name. Peter and Sue Goodman. Peter and Sue have been nominated for their work in forming and continuing to give countless volunteer hours to care, Community Action for Racial Equality. Pat has been nominated for her many years as an advocate for adult education and literacy in the Albany area. Buzz Wheeler of Coastal Ranch and Farm. He is not here tonight, but he's being represented by Greg Rowe of the United Way of Lynn County. I'll say that Greg nominated Buzz for his years of community involvement and helping to, quote, "change lives every day for the better." Sandy Roberts, Albany Police Officer. Sandy has been nominated for stretching her time and position to do every bit of good she possibly can, and in her spare time to help on community cleanup projects, graffiti removal, and trail work. And the Human Relations Award goes to Pat Loy. I want to say just a little bit more about Pat, and I want you to all remain up here. Pat volunteers with many organizations, and through her individual effort has made a difference in the lives of countless residents in need in Albany. And five years ago, Pat founded what was then simply known as the GED Group, a forum for providers and supporters of GED preparation services to meet, exchange news and ideas, and strengthen the collective approach to programming. Pat oriented this group to a great and regional need, the tens of thousands of people over the age of 25 who had yet to complete a high school equivalency. With Pat's passion and vision as a guide, this GED Group laid the foundation for stronger interagency collaboration now known as the GED Prep Network Lynn and Benton Counties. And then Tara Dixon, who is here, a member of the GAPS Community Development Commission, offered these thoughts, too. One of the places that Pat regularly volunteers is at the Albany Helping Hand Shelter to tutor adults, assisting them in getting their GED. And Tara said, "I had the fortunate experience to be part of helping one of her students." This student was 19 years old and had been living at the shelter for some time when he came to her class. Eventually, Pat found out that he was only a few credits short of graduating from high school, and that's when she began making phone calls and advocating for him. "I worked for the schools as a homeless liaison, so we had the chance to begin a dialogue to problem-solve how we could make this happen in a short time until the June graduation deadline. It was through Pat's constant encouragement, diligence, and checking with the students and the collaboration of several others to encourage him to overcome the obstacles to graduation that, I am happy to say, he succeeded in getting his diploma instead of a GED and moved on to register and attend LBCC." So congratulations. And congratulations to all of you for the wonderful work you're doing. Peter and Sue, keep up, keep it up, keep going. Great year. Pass this on to Buzz. He's been doing it for years in this town. And Sandy?
Thank you.
There's a lot of graffiti in this town. Thank you very much. Javier Cervantes, the guy who was on the front page of the Democrat Herald today.
Good enough. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Beautiful day today in Albany. Another day in paradise. I get the honor of being able to read some nominees for the organization and business category for the City of Albany. As we did last time, we'll ask that the nominees and the group, as I read them off, come up and stand next to us, and then we'll read off who our certificate awardees are and the person who, the group organization that gets the award as well. So the first nominee is the Community Action for Racial Equity, CARE, represented by Beth CARE has been nominated for its commitment to providing a working model of what a harmonious, equitable society might look like, and is dedicated to promoting equity, diversity, and inclusion. Our second nominee is Sanctuary Stage, represented by co-founder Dan Jones and Tina Marie Ivy. Dan Jones, I believe it's Dan. That's not Dan Jones. Sanctuary Stage has been nominated for producing plays and share the showcase slices of our ordinary yet poetic lives, and underscore the strength of humility or humanity and the endurance of the human spirit. And our last nominee is the Welcome Center for GAPS HJ, represented by Heather Husevka, Patricia Martinez, Roselia Francisco, David Gamin, and David Diano. The Welcome Center has been nominated for helping countless Spanish-speaking families throughout Albany with a wide variety of important services, including translation and interpretation services, parent education, early literacy assistance, and healthcare, parent-school involvement, and migrant education. These are your nominees for the organization award. And the award goes to the Community Action for Racial Equity. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. I'll read a couple of sentences here from the nomination that we received for CARE. CARE is a multiracial, multicultural, action-oriented organization dedicated to promoting racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. As a grassroots organization, we have the ability to alert and be agile, and thus be able to take a unique approach in employing direct action to address institutional racism within Albany community. Our model is to be of decisions, is model of decisions by consensus works very well and promotes shared learning. CARE's accomplishments over the first year of its existence are considerable. Acknowledging importance of education and public racial injustice, CARE has tabled at numerous community events and has hosted three showings of the film Two Towns of Jasper in both Albany and Corvallis. It hosted the film White Like Me in Albany and supported the live lecture of Tim Wise at LBCC. It has supported and participated in the direction of the group's exploring white privilege as well. We have also cosponsored, or this is also cosponsored, events with NAACP and Black Lives Matter organization, Enlightenment is the First Step Towards Eliminating Misconceptions and Prejudice. Finally, CARE is dedicated to the community, and while we may not be able to recognize, be able to right every wrong, we will continue to push and push the envelope at every opportunity to ensure Albany is a welcoming, inclusive place. I want to also provide the certificates to our co-winners. Yeah, please. The Welcome Center, thank you so much for the work that you do. These are our nominees and our winners. Everybody here, obviously, deserves the recognition of the city. We really appreciate everything that you do for our lovely little town, and keep up the good work. It does, and thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and thank you for our Human Relations Commission. And this is why all of us love Albany so much, because it takes wonderful people like you to make a great community. And all of the volunteers and folks that are out there helping others, and this is just an example of what all of your efforts are, and we are greatly appreciative. There is one person that didn't attend tonight, and I noticed, was Buzz Wheeler. And I'd just like to say a few words. He's a very humble man, and as you can see, he did not attend tonight. But Buzz has been that person in the community that has really supported a lot of our city programs. We wouldn't have our paddle boats in Waverly Lake for probably over 10, the past 10 years if it wasn't for Buzz Wheeler in supporting that program. He was very essential in building our brand-new YMCA, so he was very determined and put a lot of heart and energy, time, and his money into that facility. Also, we have our new police and fire station being built, and I don't think we would have been able to move forward with those projects if it wasn't for Buzz, too, and his strong support. So wonderful recipients tonight, nominees and the award winners, and it just kind of shows with Buzz, he's just a very humble man, so, but yeah, we're very grateful, too. But want to thank all of you, and keep that energy, keep going for Albany and helping others, because that's what will continue to keep a great community that we live in. Thank you, thank you, all of you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a proclamation. This is for Chaplain Sunday, and it's February 14, 2016. Whereas, February 3, 2016, will mark the 73rd anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester. And I think we'll get to see if someone can shut the door there. So Tara, can you, or Peter, can you shut the door behind you as you come out? Yep, thank you. Okay. February 3, 2016, will mark the 73rd anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas, these four chaplains, from diverse religious backgrounds, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers, and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas, the heroic deeds of chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom, will be inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas, we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice, along with all other servicemen and women, to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all, shall not be in vain. Now therefore, I share in Canopa Mayor, the City of Albany, Oregon, to hereby proclaim February 14, 2016, as Four Chaplain Sunday in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens to commemorate the day with appropriate observances. And witness that whereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 10th day of February 2016. And with that, we have a couple folks here, and Floyd, would you like to come forward and say a few words about this proclamation? And if you want to come to the podium, use the microphone there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if you can state your name, too. Thank you.
My name is Floyd Bacon, and it's my privilege to be the chaplain of American Legion Post 10. And I want to say thank you to Mayor Canopa and to the city council for issuing this proclamation. The, excuse me, the American Legion nationally has been honoring the four chaplains since 1988. Now, I'm relatively new to the American Legion, so I'm probably, like most of you, and was not aware of the four chaplains until just very recently. As the proclamation states, it was on February 3, 1943, there were 902 US Army troops that were on this transport going across the North Atlantic bound for Greenland. Approximately 1:00 AM in the morning, a Nazi submarine fired a torpedo into the midsection just below the main deck, killing in the explosion and trapping many others below deck. The ship sunk in about 27 minutes. Two escort ships, two Coast Guard ships, cutters, were able to rescue only 231 survivors. The four chaplains, as you can imagine, there was chaos onboard the ship, and the four chaplains sprang into action immediately, began to try to organize the exit of the ship, and as it turned out, there were not enough life jackets to go around. Each of these four gentlemen gave up their own life jacket to save the life of a soldier. One survivor said, "As I swam away from the ship, I looked back, the flares had lighted everything, the bow came up high, and she slid under. The last thing I saw, the four chaplains were up there praying for the safety of the men. They had done everything they could. I did not see them again." They themselves did not have a chance without their life jackets. Very moving story, and we thank you, and we look forward to perhaps celebrating this again next year. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thank you for bringing that to us, Floyd, so, yeah, so, yeah, very hard, and so, yeah.
Proclamation?
For the proclamation, did you want to pick it up? I can, do you have it with you, Teresa, and I can just sign it and give it to you right now?
I can give it to you. I can get it later.
We can do it right now if it wants to save you some time, so, yeah, go ahead and bring it to me, and I'll sign it, and then Floyd can take it, and we won't have to, he won't have to have it delayed being mailed to him, so. I want to thank you so much, too, and for all you do for the, for the American Legion, and you, Steve, so, for the American Legion, so we're.
Pardon me. Should I mention our post commander, Mr. Beal?
Yes. I regret, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot to. Thank you, Steve. All right, thank you so much. Okay, next is Schedule Business, and is there anyone from Business from the public that would like to bring an item forward? Nope, not seeing anyone. Okay. On this next item, this is one that we discussed on Monday. Actually, it would not be a first reading, it would be a second reading, the ordinance, but I think Wes wanted to say a few words.
Right. We had a long discussion on Monday night, so I don't want to try and cover all that ground again. My recommendation to the council is to just go ahead and place this on the ballot, assuming that's your will, and that was the indication that we got on Monday, by resolution rather than going through the ordinance route. Again, as Jim, I think, pointed out, he was being sort of very cautious, and that's an appropriate thing, by recommending an ordinance, but we have found no evidence or no problem by doing this through resolution, and do not believe it's going to be vulnerable to a challenge. This takes away the issue of the emergency clause and allows folks to just vote it up or down on its merits rather than on a procedural issue. And I think that's really what we're all concerned about, is the merits of the issue. So for that reason, I'm recommending that you would move to pass a resolution if you were so inclined.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do?
I would move to pass a resolution.
A resolution.
So that was two motions to do the resolution?
I'll second.
Okay. Yep. I think, yeah, I think Dick had made a motion, too, so, either one.
Just so it gets done.
Yep. Okay, and discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Next is adoption of a resolution. This is amending the fee schedule for certain building division fees and repealing a resolution, three resolutions. This is on page eight, and did staff have any comments on this?
No, Mayor, everything you need to know is in the memo, and as I said on Monday, this is really just a housekeeping item. It does not impact services that we are currently providing or fees that we're currently charging with permits.
Okay, all right. Dale?
So is this an increase at all?
It represents no change in current practice. It's just simply housekeeping, it's getting the resolution to match what current practice is.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, because the agenda says amending the fee schedule. So anyone listening, want them to know, fees are not going up.
That's correct.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is a small consent calendar, and this is another item that was from Monday, and this is just, this is over Judge Scott's, his contract.
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
All right, that's adopting the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next is approval of agreement, library resource sharing, intergovernmental agreement. We have our library director in the back, Ed Gallagher. Did you have any questions, Ed? This is on page 23.
You know, Ed doesn't get to come here very often, so I'll say something nice about him while you consider this action. He's done a great job, I think, of, you know, I don't think Ed has ever made a secret that he is very much in favor of consolidating library services in order to extend those services to children and adults who live outside the boundaries of library areas. And what Ed has been able to do over the years, even without a cost to our own residents, or minimal cost to our own residents, is consolidate services from a number of different sources in a way that helps spread the services without incurring additional costs. And he's done that with grants and with programs that have made us more efficient. I think he's had some great cooperation and support from our IT department, and I think that's to everybody in the area's benefit, so, and this is, this agreement, I think, is just a part of that effort.
Okay.
I'd move an option of the IGA on page 23.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Ed. Next is appointments. So this is the TLT Ad hoc Advisory Committee. This is on page 25. And I think we have everyone's appointment except for Councilor Olson's appointment. And do you think you'll be coming back with another name, or what would you?
Well, I've been looking for someone to fill that appointment, and not had much success. But I ran into one of my constituents at By Mart, and talking to her about one thing and another, and I thought, maybe she'd like to be on this committee. And so I'd like to appoint Dale Ross to the TLT Committee. I don't have the paperwork for her, but I think we all know her, most of us know her, and.
Did you say Dale Rouse?
Dale Rouse.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
So I'd like to add her to the list.
I don't know, a long time. Knows a lot of that stuff.
Is Dale still on the board for Montieth?
I think she is. Is Dale on the board for Montieth?
Montieth gives TLT.
Does she qualify?
Yeah.
To get TLT, she is.
They do, that's right. Get rid of that one.
Yep, the way that this is structured, it eliminates a lot of very qualified folks, so.
Yeah. Many of my friends are either on the board, or a committee, or planning commission, or that party.
Well, there are a number of people who are down here who get benefits but are not on, at this point, on boards. We now have NOVAC people here, if you know them. There is at least one of the, oh, gosh.
Realize it looks like they're part of the need to be members of the Chamber of Commerce, or some of that sort.
Well, they need to not, to not be, not have a vested interest in the outcome, other than just make the place better.
There is three members, though, being proposed to be on the committee that are, that are on the Chamber of Commerce's board, so that's sort of one special interest group, so.
They don't get TLT funds.
If they do, are a recipient of the City of other funds.
I would move the requested action on page 25, items one and two.
Second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Yes, I guess Dale has been disqualified, is that what I understand?
Yeah.
Yes.
So would you still like to come back for the next meeting with another member to appoint?
Well, I'll see if I can find somebody else.
Okay. So the action can be for what's proposed here, but then the committee doesn't start yet until Dale, until Dick comes back.
Well, they could, as far as that goes, they could start. I mean, we have a whole lot of committees that are not full.
Well, I think if you start this process, you should have everyone there.
Well, I could probably give you a half a dozen names of people downtown who are not part of the system, and it should not come from me, it should come from you. There are, there are people available if you, you know, depends who you're looking to put in place, what you want them to do. I mean, I guess the folks at Ciberus, one is on ADA, but the other isn't. I mean, it's, you know, it's, there's a person at First Burger that is not on, I understand, at this point.
Well, I think Dick's capable of coming up with someone.
I mean, it's not like it's, it's not rocketized.
No. Call for a question. Just a discussion point. All of the items that are listed underneath discussion and fleshing out the scope, it's all well and good, as long as it's applied. and fleshing out the scope, uh, it's all well and good, as long as it's applied, uh, across the board to every agency that is receiving TLT funds, the same rigid overlook for recommendation, as long as it's applied, uh, uniformly across the board, I have no problem with it. But if it ends up just being a target shoot to one particular agency, then I'm gonna, uh, get kind of cranky.
I agree, too.
Well, and I wouldn't blame you if you were. I mean, what this is ultimately is a forensic audit, and if Stuart were here tonight, he would point out that bean counters, as a group, are, one, used to being audited, but they look forward to auditing, because that points out that they did it right. I mean, it's, this is a, this is a system that has not really been audited for years. It has not really been looked into with any, and it's time, it's done. I'll call a question.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, one no. Okay, um, next is business from the council, and Rich, anything?
I, just on a personal note, I've been having a problem with my shoulder, and I finally got some help. I am now, the right wing of, the right-winger is, is a whole lot better.
You mean, you finally visited dispensary?
Definitely not.
Oh, that's good.
I visited the professional, the professional medical people.
Okay.
Oh, good one, Ray, yeah. Okay, Ray, anything?
No.
Okay, Floyd?
No, thank you.
Bessie?
Nothing, no.
Hey, Bill?
Uh, Monday during the work session, I brought up the subject of compensation for counselors, and, uh, staff gave me some information. I don't know exactly when it went to $100 and how long it was at $100, but I do know that it went from 100 to 110, um, just about 27 years ago. It was May of 1989 when council got a raise of $10. So, back to the discussion from Monday, I would, uh, propose a mega motion that, that we increase, uh, the pay, or the salary, if you will, to, to counselors by $20.
And, we're gonna do the mayor at some time?
Uh, and then the mayor would be 30?
Forty.
Or 40? It's not double, yours is half again, what, yours is 50% higher than council, right?
Oh, so it'd be 30 then?
Well, staff can do the, the math, but...
But it's usually always just gone up the same as the counselors. When it went up before, it wasn't by percentage.
That's fine, too. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So, do you want, was that, so, would it be 20/20?
It'd be the 20 for everybody.
20/20 then?
Yep.
Why not 50/50?
Just the 20?
Realistically, I mean, I'd probably said it before, but, you never, never waste a good, uh, anchor moment, uh, if you're gonna do something that, that has the possibility of having an individual out there who, who wants everyone to be, get minimum wage, um, when we look at the time we spend, we're getting about a dollar an hour or something. Um, you know, 20 years ago, I mean, what did, what did hamburger cost, what did gasoline cost 20 years ago?
I'll be careful, 'cause it's down to 99 cents in, uh, one of the states.
Yeah, well, 20 years ago, well, diesel, 20 years ago...
We're gonna see 25 cent hamburgers pretty soon.
Yeah, 50 cents a gallon, you know, and it's now $2. It was up to 4, um, but, you know...
Well, I don't think, as Jim pointed out, uh, Monday, I don't think the intent was to compare it to, um, minimum wage, uh, you know, there's no way of tracking how much everybody spends, you know, individually, we could account for our time spent, but, um, this is intended just to be a, a nominal increase, uh, not tied to any index or any minimum wage or anything like that. It's been 27 years, this discussion has come up many, many times before, and, uh, so, my proposal's for $20.
I would second that.
Okay, and discussion?
Yeah, the, the last thing I did, uh, consider when I wanted to get involved was any kind of a pay or stipend at all, uh, it just, I can't believe that, that we get anything is, is, I just don't think it's necessary at all, um, and I think you're always gonna be able to find competent people to want to volunteer, uh, without having, getting paid to do this, so, I'm gonna vote no on it.
Other comments, or Dick, and then Bessie?
Yeah, I've always said, or I used to say, "You can't pay me what I'm worth at this kind of rate," but I don't know if that's still the case, but I still think I'll vote no.
There's two no's. Lloyd?
So, or Bessie?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, I don't think any of us are in it for the money or anything like that, but I don't know anyone on the council, or, or you mayor, who puts in for mileage or anything like that, copies, anything, so, um, it's not for the money is gonna make us rich or anything like that, but it's just kind of a compensation, I think, to, um, well, 27 years, I think, Bill said, you know, that $20 isn't, isn't that much, and, I mean...
I agree, it's not the amount that, that concerns me, it's just the principle of having, having it at all, so...
I was gonna vote no, but seeing as how there are two no votes, I'm gonna vote yes, only because, well, I think it's a little silly for us to be paid this little amount if we're gonna get paid. So, anyway, call a question.
Floyd, you haven't said anything. Did you wanna?
Be wise.
Everyone's weighed in on it.
Yeah. Over the years, I've not looked at the salary, but, any income I do receive, I generally turn around and contribute more than what I receive back into other city functions, so...
City chamber or something?
It's a, it's a bookkeeping issue. You know, I contribute my time, I contribute my resources back to city functions.
Yeah, it's true, we all attend all those events, too, so, we all, all in the negative, so, okay, um, so the motion is for $20 increase on that, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Would you like to take a roll call, please, then?
Olson?
No.
Collins?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Callan?
Yes.
Kupinski?
No.
Over?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Four, two, so...
As a matter of principle, can we refuse the raise?
You can donate it back.
Donate it back.
It'd be easier to do it that way. You can donate, you could donate five times that back. I mean, you could donate everything back, and half of your social security check.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I know, and some people might think, well, you know, why would, why would the council be giving themselves a raise, though, too, but I can guarantee every one of us go in the hole of probably what all we do, and, and support the community, and, um, and for what the expenses that are incurred, but I, I personally know I do myself, so, um, but, so, yeah, okay, that, that passed.
Matt, Mayor, I was gonna say, Bill, did you say, I know you said that we haven't had a raise in, in like, the 26 years and stuff, but did you say how much we were making? I mean, a lot of people, a lot of people are the assumption that we make, uh, like, full-time pay, that type of thing.
Right, so, I, I don't know when, it, it was bumped to $100.
Okay.
But, uh, 27 years ago, it was bumped from 100 to 110.
Okay, that's right, all right.
So, this puts it up to 130 a month.
And it, so, I was sitting there thinking, like, why in 1989, I wonder, why, when, were you on the council then, Dick, in 89?
No, no, but when I left the council in 1980, it was only $30.
Because that would have been a time when our, like, our...
That's what you were worth back when.
I was worth it, yeah. Yeah, the, um, people on the council just were really lavish for themselves in the 80s, I can say, apparently.
Well, and then, 89, though, would have been just when the police station would have just been kind of built, too, around that time, so I wonder if there was just additional duties or something on the council, but, yeah, interesting, so...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, and Bill, that was your, anything else, Bill?
No, no, you...
Oh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I had dislocated my shoulder two years ago, and my, uh, professional medical man, um, said if I wanted to try cannabis, say about it, I was just fine with him, he signed off, and it worked great, so, I recommend it.
Okay, um, and, is that it, Dick?
That's it.
Okay, and with me, I didn't have anything this evening.
I just, by way of information, um, city attorney and Marilyn and I went up to the Court of Appeals today. Marilyn and I were cheerleaders, although we couldn't say anything or do anything other than just watch, as Jim presented the case to the Court of Appeals regarding, um, the, um, the penalty that was imposed upon me for, um, the press release that I wrote on behalf of the council here a couple of years ago. Jim, I thought, was very eloquent, did an outstanding job, uh, the price was certainly right for his work, and, uh, it was greatly appreciated, and, uh, and I, and, you know, we've made light of it, we've made, Jim and I have cracked jokes about this now for a couple of years, but, um, it really is, you know, in my view, a great public service that Jim has performed to try and ensure that people get the best information they can about issues facing their communities. And when you put your public employees in a place where they feel they can't tell you why we need a new police station, why we need a new fire station, uh, why we're proposing attacks, um, then it becomes very, very difficult for folks, uh, to, to get good information. And it puts a lot of a burden, of the burden, I think, on, on elected officials who are making now $130 a month, um, to try and, you know, get out, to get the word out to the community, so, um, uh, my thanks to Jim for what I think has been some outstanding work, and, you know, you never know the outcome when you go through this, but, um...
When will you know?
Whenever they choose to tell us.
Before you retire, maybe?
And this started two years ago, was it?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Yeah, wow, that's amazing.
October 23rd.
Okay, keep our fingers crossed.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep, anything else? Okay, staff have anything?
Yeah.
So, anything, Marilyn, staff?
No. Uh, one thing, uh, Counselor Kopczynski asked last time, or some time ago, which neighborhood would be chosen for the big pickup this year? It's the Lexington neighborhood.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That will be Saturday, May 21st.
Okay, okay, great.
Of the, the street location?
For the, for the dump site?
It'll actually be sitting?
Probably the park.
Yeah, it'll be the, uh, LDS State Center on Grand Prairie Road. They have that wonderful parking lot that you can go in and out and make a circle, and, and the picnic shelter for the pizza lunch afterwards.
Great.
Very, they've been very gracious about loaning us their property that day.
Okay, all right, is that it?
I guess I'll come over and drink.
Okay, um, our next meeting will be a work session, February 22nd, regular session, um, February 24th. I think we have Kara, though, next week, so, and with that, we're adjourned.